The new question is now on, so we're now transmitting to the world, so to speak. The first item of business is the minutes of the previous meeting. Is everyone happy with the minutes of the previous meeting? Do you expect them?
Yes.
Thank you. Apologies Emma for absence and substitutes.
We have apologies from councillor, my coach and councillor Patricia Ellis is going to substitute.
Thank you. Actually, let me just welcome the new members of the committee, or I was talking about members. I think we've got two new members of the committee, which is councillor Anna James and councillor David Else. So, welcome to the committee.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, declarations of interest.
Number four of the team.
Okay, thank you. Any members, questions from members of the public?
None received.
Or from members?
No.
Good, too good. Well, we'll try and get through this meeting by about nine o'clock if we possibly can, but we've got quite a big agenda and a couple of very important subjects to cover. So, we'll get straight into the community safety partnership and ask Kelvin Bills to introduce it and then introduce our guests.
Thank you, thank you chairman. Yeah, so I'm here as head of communities as part of Safer Waverley partnership tonight for this part of the agenda. I'm going to talk you through basically the structure with superintendent Graham Barnett. Graham is here as the chair of the executive of the Safer Waverley partnership, not as in his police role tonight. We have inspector Gary Smith in the police who we can deal with questions later on regarding that role.
Thank you.
So, you okay, fine?
Yes, go ahead.
So, what I wanted to do is just give a little bit of background to community safety partnership so that we're aware of where they come from. So, it's come from, they've been around for a considerable length of time since 1998 and it's a statutory duty for agencies to work together in partnership. So, in Waverley, our CSP is the SWP, the Safer Waverley partnership. So, that's, all's gone bickering. But that's what we'll be talking about tonight.
Where's it going?
It's still green.
What colour is this?
It's one of these lamps.
All green.
Very pleasant green.
It's going to really affect your presentation with Emma here.
Sorry about this.
Let's go and breathe again.
Okay, I think, are you okay with that?
Yeah, we're okay. Can people in the back speak? Okay. We could turn back to the light so people can see that's fine.
So, just before, I was rudely interrupted by Emma. So, the community safety partnership in Waverley is the Safer Waverley partnership. So, legislative changes to CSP, there's been a range of new responsibilities and there's a list of things that Graham will go through in more detail, but we now have to undertake responsibility for domestic homicide reviews as part of the partnership and Waverley has had a number since that's become a responsibility for the partnership and it's a really challenging and tough thing to look at and deal with. We have obviously the reduction of offending and re-offending and we have to now much more think about the impact of the victim and how the antisocial behaviour is impacted on them. So, we have, really the key thing is we have a frequent assessment of crime disorder on a roll in three years or partnership plans as part of the Waverley partnership and that's our duty as a CSP to do that. And it's the requirement while we're here tonight for local authority to look at what the CSP has been doing and to scrutinise and challenge us if you feel we're doing that correctly or if things we should be focusing on. Partners. So, tonight we have the, sorry, police with us, obviously Waverley Borough councillor or part of this partnership and then you've got the list of everyone else who is a statutory partner, so that's, they're all there in front of you. So, everyone has a key role. The idea is a much more holistic approach to how we deal with antisocial behaviour and make Waverley a safer place. So, as part of the Safer Waverley partnership, as I mentioned earlier, we have an executive which sets the strategic direction for the, more the sort of delivery groups, the tactical groups as the police probably would like to say. Graham is the chair of that executive and we'll talk through the action plan in more detail later. I chair the joint action group and the community harm and risk management meeting, lovingly known as CHARM, is chaired by Andrew Smith, the head of strategic housing. And what's come in and become a much more important part of the CSP's work is a serious organised crime group, SOC, which is chaired by Sergeant Andy Crane. And that now feeds into both the JAG and the CHARM groups is quite a big piece of work we'll be doing and we'll touch on that more clearly. Actually, I did think, actually the JAG, I thought there was a bit more on the JAG there, but the JAG looks after areas, so if you've got an area where there's antisocial behaviour happening, we could look at that as a group. One example would be Frenchham, Frenchham Pond over the summer during the hot weather, a lot of antisocial parking, antisocial behaviour and how we can address that to make sure it's a safe environment to visit in a safe place if there was an accident that we can deal with. And as part of that, JAG have looked at that over the last several years to do a lot of work, be it education on parking, antisocial parking, littering, you know, anything like that. That's been part of the area we've looked at. Community risk and harm is more the individual. So, if there's an individual, which I can go into examples here, if there's an individual that's actually causing antisocial behaviour, CHARM looks after that role and serious organised crime, I think, explains it as well as itself. Oh, yeah, we're sort of saying this, I mean, the most complicated looking structure for the SWP in the world.
I'll like sense of it for you in a minute.
Yes, that's going to be Graham's job. But in essence, it runs from the executive to the groups I mentioned before, to JAG and CHARM are the key groups and serious organised crime, although we've got it slightly to decide here, actually feeds directly in to the JAG and CHARM groups now. So, it's a very key part of the efforts of the team. And this just indicates the domestic homicide reviews and the community trigger is what I was talking about, we're putting the victim first and understanding. So, if someone is subject to continuous sort of antisocial behaviour and it's more than one of the agencies can resolve, they can instigate a community trigger and that's when we would look at it holistically and we have a plan. So, now I'm going to pass on to Graham as well as chair to take you through the rest of the presentation.
So, the first question is, is what does the executive do? Well, as Kelvin's already explained, the executive is there to provide oversight to everything that goes on within the Safer Waverley partnership. So, it brings all of those organisations that are involved in the statutory partnership together to come up with an action plan and priorities over a three-year period, but we do reassess that on a yearly basis. So, we provide the strategic direction which is fed into by an overview from all of the agencies, and that's not just the police, of crime and antisocial behaviour in the communities of Waverley. We look at that, we focus then on the areas that are upcoming, the areas that are priorities and we set the agendas for each of the groups that sit under those to make sure we're targeting and focusing on the right things for the residents of Waverley and the things that are the most impactful to vulnerable people. We agree the partnership's priorities and associated action plan, as I've said, and we oversee the budget, that is quite limited, but we oversee the budget that is available to the group to put CCTV cameras in particular areas, to focus media on vulnerability and to make people aware of what is going on in our community so they can help themselves. It's partly about resilient communities. Managing domestic homicide reviews, and I'll come on to that a little bit later on because that has been a particular challenge for the Safer Waverley partnership executive and also to manage community triggers. So, community triggers, and I know Kelvin's already alluded to it, so community triggers are those instances where the community can put forward their concerns, a member of the public, if they're not satisfied with the way that something has been dealt with by any of the agencies that are involved, they can put a community trigger in and it's the executive's role to look into that and to consider whether anything could have been done differently and whether we should be going back and researching that and that can be directed to any of the agencies. Hence, you've got the whole raft of agencies on that board. So, what does the joint action group do? And again, Kelvin's alluded to it, but they tackle the locations that are the problem and the example was given around Frenchham Pond. So, actually, parking in the immediate area was causing a real problem for traffic in that area. So, what can we do as a joint partnership to resolve those issues? But it also looks at problem areas, so areas where you might have a particular issue around drug dealing, for instance. So, what can the partnership do because it's not just around a police lead or a council lead, it's about what all of those agencies can do. So, actually, drug use is a health issue as well as being a police issue around prosecution as well as being a council issue around the locations. So, it's about combining those powers to use the best set of skills to have the most impact. And a great example of that, in fact, was in, and it's not Waverley based, but it's Woking based, where huge drug problems, drug deaths. So, all of the agencies worked together to put a plan in place to get people off the streets, to put them into the right medical support locations, to target the criminals that were causing the problems and then the council to put orders in place which prevented people from being on those streets. And this was about eighteen months ago, had a real impact on drug abuse and drug use in the Woking area.
Graham, would you mind if I gave an example?
Yeah.
One of the key ones, and I'm looking around to my farmland councillors, was we used, when antisocial behaviour was happening around sort of the East Street area, South Street car park, we carried out an environmental visual assessment. So, with part of the partnership brought in a police officer to carry out that. So, it allowed us as an action group to look at it and say, right, how can we almost design out what the antisocial behaviour that was happening in that area? So, it allows us to bring forward a little bit more holistically. So, just an example.
So, yeah, so that's one of the groups which includes setting up task and finish groups as appropriate. So, actually, it's all very well having these meetings, but if they're just talking shops, we need to make sure that there's some evidence at the end of it and some outcome at the end of it. So, task and finish groups are often feed out of those, out of the JAG. They monitor licence premises, so are there particular issues with local premises? Is there anything we need to focus on? Is there anything the police needs or the council needs or trading standards need to look at? Mobile CCTV requests. CCTV is a big part of community safety and the mobile CCTV is available to be put up at different locations based on needs. So, the JAG considers those requests as they do with the joint enforcement group. So, the joint enforcement group can be tasked from the joint action group to focus on specific issues and get the best of it. So, that's a Waverley Borough council enforcement team, as you will all know, that deliver local enforcement on local issues targeted by the joint action group. Community harm and risk management, this is about people. So, the way I liken it is places versus people. And this has changed from what used to be the CAG because it's very much more now about vulnerability. It's about focusing on not only problem individuals and families, but also the victims of crime and people that are vulnerable, either through their own behaviours or the behaviours of others. So, we're talking about, and you may have heard me speaking quite recently on the radio matter, cuckooing behaviour. So, they focus on those individuals that are vulnerable within the community, that are targeted by criminal gangs, and it is happening in Waverley, targeted by criminal gangs who will focus on vulnerable individuals, perhaps drug users, perhaps alcohol users, perhaps just elderly people and will focus on their address, take over their address and use that to fund their criminality out of the eyes and ears of policing. It is happening, as I'm sure Gary will allude to, in the Waverley area and across Surrey and these are organised criminal gangs. So, we focus on all of those things and try and put in place risk management plans to deal with the behaviour of perpetrators appropriately and proportionately, again using the right skills from the right team and reduce the impact on individuals. So, a great example of that is the closure orders supported by the council, which is a police power, but it's done through the community safety team and actually that gives people respite. So, you can put in a closure order on a premises and allow the resident to remain there or you can put in a closure order on a premises and ask everyone to leave. Our preference is always allowing residents to remain there and that's a real way that we can address the behaviour that impacts on not only the communities, but individuals who may be vulnerable in those premises. And also the overseeing case manage, those community triggers that I spoke about earlier on. So, they will sit on the agenda if they come up and they're adopted by the group. And Waverley haven't had a huge number of them, it's fair to say, which I like to think means that generally people are dealing with things properly in the first instance, which is always the aim. But they will oversee and now case manage those community triggers through the CHARM or the Community Harm and Risk Management Meeting Group. You can tell why they call it CHARM, can't you? So, serious and organised crime, and serious and organised crime, it's not a new thing, it's been around for a long time, but we have had a real focus on it and this is across Surrey as a county and not just within Waverley. I chair the ASB and SOC force forum, which sits once a month across the force and part of what we're trying to do with that group is to embed understanding of serious and organised crime into the community safety partnerships. The serious and organised crime group will sit within the JAG, but it will feed into CHARM and JAG meetings as appropriate. And the idea is to prevent, identify and disrupt those issues that I was talking about a moment ago. So, it's preventing the cuckooing of premises, it's preventing your modern day slavery, it's resolving issues with child sexual exploitation and child criminal exploitation and putting the right tools, again, using the right agency, whether that be medical, whether that be council, whether that be police, whether that be fire, to divert and deal with the issue rather than just going along a policing route or just going along a council route, which has often been the way in the past, is bringing all those agencies together. And as I've said, and it also, as Kelvin said, manages and reviews the local SOC profile and the SOC action plan, which is currently still being designed. So, we've got a draft profile, but the local profile we're going through at the moment, so we'll be looking to get that out and available very, very soon. So, what are our priorities? And this is kind of where this group becomes invaluable to us because we've consulted with the other partners through the Safer Waverley partnership executive. We think we understand what we need to do around these areas and what our focus is, but this is kind of where this group can impact on that and can influence our thoughts and perhaps come up with some things that are current that we may not know about. So, we focus on threat, harm and risk and we focus on vulnerability. So, these are the high-risk things within our community that the Safer Waverley partnership need to oversee. So, these are not the low-level things, these are the things that really are impacting on our communities, putting people's lives at risk, putting people in a really dangerous and vulnerable situation. The first is domestic abuse. That's a really big one, a real big focus for us, as I'll come on to in a minute. In Waverley alone, in the last few years, there's been five domestic-related murders, which all result in a domestic homicide review. So, domestic abuse and reducing the risk of domestic abuse, reducing re-offending and supporting those victims and putting the right tools in place to prevent it in the first place is a focus for the Safer Waverley partnership. The second is child exploitation and I spoke a little bit about this because what many people have seen in the press is child sexual exploitation. And yes, absolutely that happens, but there are two forms of child exploitation. You've got the sexual exploitation, which is effectively abusing people for favours, using people for sexual purposes, which is absolutely horrible. What we're becoming more and more, what is becoming more and more relevant across Surrey now is child criminal exploitation. So, these are county-run gangs, organised gangs that are coming down and using young people from the local area to peddle drugs and to do, to perform criminal activities. So, that's child criminal exploitation. And these are young people, they are young people living in the communities that are being targeted, sometimes based on vulnerability, sometimes purely based on opportunity. So, that's something that the group wants to focus on and try and reduce in the next period between 2018 and 2021. SOC, we've spoken about serious and organised crime, I won't go into any greater detail about that, but then we're talking about county lines, drug gangs, we're talking about the gangs that are targeting, ATMs is a very current one for Waverley Borough at the moment, we're talking about modern day slavery. So, our premises that are bringing people in from abroad and using them effectively, all serious organised crime, all things we want to tackle. Prevention of terrorism, so that has been spoken about lots, it is still absolutely current, it's still absolutely something we should be focusing on and we should be preparing Waverley Borough to reduce the risk of terrorism and tackle any radicalisation that is identified with a partnership approach, feeding it into the channel group. And finally, we've spoken about it a lot, supporting vulnerable victims. And actually, I think that all of the top four feed into supporting vulnerable victims. So, the ultimate aim of the Safer Waverley partnership is to do exactly that, to support vulnerable victims in their times of need. We then feed into other areas of focus, so identifying and tackling crime and ASB hotspots and perpetrators. And that I've already spoken about, that's managed through the community harm and risk management meeting about the people, so that's tackling the vulnerable victims and that's tackling the perpetrators of those offences. And also through the joint action group, which targets those locations and Kelvin quite rightly just spoke about East Street, which are prominent issues that actually between the group, we should have powers to reduce and tackle those issues and mitigate any risk that comes from them. And this is a really important one and we talk about resilient communities all the time, about actually improving engagement with our public, help make our communities stronger and help the public to understand what they can do for us, what we can do for them and actually what they can do for themselves to try and tackle problems. We're looking at some community engagement and awareness campaigns at the moment and also engagement with yourselves as elected members. We have Mr Deane who sits on the Safer Waverley partnership executive as well and an elected member who's just joined the executive from Surrey County Council, so we get that scrutiny at that level, but also engagement with yourselves as elected members also. Partnership activity then, so domestic homicide reviews, it is home office guidance that every partnership, CSP effectively will carry out domestic homicide reviews. We also fund domestic homicide reviews and I'll come on to one of the challenges with that shortly. We then need to publish the findings, we need to adopt a chair for the group, they will go and carry out along a home office guidance document, they'll carry out that domestic homicide review, come up with findings, come up with an action plan, we then get agreement from the home office to publish that and we are responsible for making sure that the actions on the action plan are carried through. And as I say, it's currently, we're working with DHR Five in Waverley at the moment, which is the largest number in the county, just to put things in perspective, is at Waverley.
And this is a considerable amount of work, I think councillor Deane, we're fully aware, this is a considerable amount of work for the Safer Waverley partnership. It's been an additional statutory responsibility.
And cost.
And cost. Because getting those actions from the panel finalised and sent to the home office is a huge amount of work that the team have had to take on over the last few years.
And I'll come on to that as well again in one of the challenges in a moment. So, serious and organised crime, there is a real lack of awareness about what, well, there was, a real lack of awareness about what it actually was. What Waverley have tried and done to really good level of success is through the SOC group, they've put in training in for all the frontline staff in Waverley Borough and our partner agencies to make sure that actually the intelligence submissions are right, they know what to look for. So, if they're going to, so we talk a lot about your refuse workers, actually they go past premises every day and may maybe seeing vulnerable victims. Your healthcare workers will be going into premises every day and are they spotting things that perhaps they might not think is a sign of exploitation, but in actual fact it is. So, what Waverley have led on, and I'm really pleased they did, is a training session led by the police, supported by the partnership to increase intelligence submissions and increase awareness of actually what sort of things are you looking for in relation to serious and organised crime. Review of the JAG and CHARM, so that is, as I discussed earlier on, that's focusing on the victims as well as the suspects, linking to serious and organised crime, linking to child, we've forgotten to take a word out there, linking to child exploitation and making sure that we're not just focusing on the perpetrators, we're focusing on the victims because often our victims, particularly if they are, an example would be a drug user themselves, it's all very well the police or the council removing one perpetrator from that individual's life, but if you then don't put the support in around them, then the problem comes around again because another group will move in and take the place. So, it's really about supporting those victims and that's where it's so important that we've got health involved as well. Community triggers, I'm not going to go over again, we've gone through that already and awareness raising. So, the SOC training is part of that, media campaigns we're looking at will be another part of that. So, it's just about raising awareness of what we can do, what we're focusing on within the community and that's every agency's responsibility as well as the partnership's Final slide then, I think, yeah, final slide, you don't want to hear too much, have you? Is our challenges. So, these are the challenges we're facing as a partnership. Diminished funding reserves. So, I think at the last count, we were down to about £2,000. Everything we request now for further funding, we need to put in bids for, and I've been working with Kelvin and his team, particularly Katrina recently and Claire, around can we bid for more funding for community initiatives through the PCC's office, through Surrey County Council. So, there are pots available, but each of those, we need to understand what our focus is, understanding what we're targeting and make sure they're strong bids because otherwise they'll simply be turned down. But that brings more to the fore, the Safer Waverley partnership's overview to understand what we're focusing on. Domestic homicide reviews and this is a real challenge. This has used a huge amount of funding to the point that for the last domestic homicide review, all statutory partners had to be approached to put additional funds into the group, some of whom did, some of whom were unable to. We are on to our fifth domestic homicide review. One has been published, we've got two more that are about to be published and there are two more that are currently being, in fact, one's being assessed at the moment, another one is being reviewed at the moment, the most recent one. They are a real challenge. If, and there is a process that the Police and Crime Commissioner is currently looking at to fund domestic homicide reviews, needless to say, if there was another domestic homicide in Waverley at the moment, that would cause some real issues, I think it's fair to say, around funding because there simply is no funding left for any further domestic homicide reviews. Touch wood, let's not have any. And all the action plans we've put in from previous ones, hopefully will start to have an impact to reduce the risk, but hence that makes that domestic abuse priority really, really key for us because it's about protecting victims at the end of the day and every one of these is a victim on the end of it, has lost their life as a result of domestic homicide. Community triggers are always a risk, there aren't a huge number in Waverley, they do create a lot of work when they do come through, they need that oversight, often they need a complete review. So, community triggers are a challenge for us, but thankfully, I think we do most things right first time, I hope we do most things right first time, we don't get a huge number of them. And then organisational reforms. Speaking personally, the police has gone through a huge amount of reform recently, I know the councils have also, as have another number of other agencies. So, we look at the health service, a number of forms. So, every time these happen, not only do the members of this group change or the Safer Waverley partnership group change, but actually adds different challenges as funding's reduced or roles are moved and it does, it makes us think about where we're going.
Yeah, because one of those has been the probation service, there's been quite a major reform of the probation service, currently under review again now, but we've been really struggling as a partnership to get the right representation. struggling as a partnership to get the right representative to come to the executive, because it's been an ever changing role. We've had the National Probation Service, ever, it's the local probation service that we've been struggling.
Decision makers you need effectively, and that's often a challenge when things are changing, people move so quickly.
Yeah, so luckily Tom and myself were able to meet with them recently, so we are hoping to get more engagement with that probation service. But it is a challenge when people change.
So that's us, that is the Safe Waverly Partnership, that's what the executive does and what our more tactical groups do. So I guess, is any questions, anything to Mr Deanus?
Just a few bits, because I was the previous chair.
Oh, absolutely.
Just a couple of bits, we talked about funding. A few years ago, when I first got involved in the Crime Disorder Partnership, I think Waverley got about two hundred thousand pounds. I think we get about eight thousand pounds now. So just to put into perspective how it's massively been reduced. The DHRs, so I'm glad Graham to come in now, because having got to number five, and at that stage, we still had only just about got DHR one through to the Home Office and then you have all the coroner's courts, all the civil litigation that follows. You can write a member's staff for six months, that easy, just to work on a DHR, there is no staff to do it. Staff in the Community Safety Group is even Katrina, you know, do three days each, that is basically it. So you could imagine having five, which is more than anyone else in the county and even places like Spelthorn, I think had one, you know, how impactful that is. So very quickly, we talk about serious and organised crime. I always say to people, don't think it won't happen in Waverley. The first cocaine factory in Europe was at Smith Brook Kill in Caledonian. You know, I've worked on the serious organised crime and if you're going to be a villain who wants to get into the community, what's a better place to hide than somewhere like Waverley? You go on the Wetherspoons in Sunnydale, there's more criminals in there than you would imagine. So Waverley is prime area for serious and organised crime. So please don't think it's just something that's ticking the box. The risks here are probably greater than places like Spelthorn. So, and you talked about funding and the PCC, we were lucky enough to get the money for the JAG. We knew that there was a very small pot left, so we sort of called in a few favours, got it really, really quick and took all the money before Gylford could get to it. So there is pots of money, it's very, very, the pots are getting very, very small now. That's probably interesting, a bit of that more history.
Thank you Graham for a very good presentation, slightly worrying and stuff.
Yeah, that would have been a good answer.
I think Lizzie's got a question, I'll take it, just go on.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. It's very interesting, in some ways comforting, but quite worrying to hear about the invaluable work the police and Waverley do in this regard. What kind of support do you get from the rest of the partnership?
It's a very good question, it's a very good question, it's a question we often ask ourselves. What I will say is it's improving greatly, we've now got representation on the executive group and until you've got full representation on the executive group, and I know Mr Deanus found when he was chair, did a fantastic job of it, when I realised what I've taken on, I picked it up myself. Getting support from other agencies is hard. If you get senior support from those other agencies, then more local support follows. And I, I mean Gary may tell me differently, but I think that is now starting to feed down into the JAG and the CHARM, because without that medical support, a lot of our victims are mental health sufferers, mental health sufferers. So actually, the Health Service and the caring professions are really, really important. So in answer to your question, we don't get as much support as we would like, but it is improving dramatically and we do get support at that executive level, which I think will play a big part as we move forward.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, very basic, it all comes down to obviously finance in the end. With the partnership, partnership to me is partnership. So does the funding for the partnership not come equally from Surrey County Council, the police and the fire and all the other things, or is it basically Waverley's funding that then supports everybody else?
And I think, if I can answer this one, there's been some very difficult conversations, going back to Lizzie's question, and I don't have to play the politics side, you're playing, I had to go head to head with some of the other agencies. And I basically had to say to them, if you don't want to play, then don't waste our time.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, because it's no good having a partnership unless you actually achieve stuff for your communities. The funding, we've had some massive issues, we have a very small pot.
Did the two hundred come from government?
Well, we don't get the two hundred anymore.
No, no, didn't originally?
It came from a couple of different sources, now those, it doesn't exist. It has been very challenging with the finances, myself and Annie had an exceptionally difficult conversation with the police, to say the least, that it was better to keep in that room rather than go public. But it is a constant, constant battle, because when you look at places like probation, as has been said, they're split into two parts and one is more of a private enterprise. So when you say to them, you are a statutory partner, therefore you should be paid towards the domestic homicide, you're our profit and our shareholders and so it's been some really, really difficult times. And I think just trying to change the culture, if I'm brutally honest, Waverley hosted, we did the minutes, we ran the action plan, we checked the money, I chaired the meeting and I didn't think that was particularly healthy, which is why myself and Graham, and our paths go back a long way, I think we agreed that by taking a step back from Waverley, it would make it slightly more partnership and we've actually got someone to take the advice as well. It is a long process.
We thought we did have. That might have fallen through, we're working on it.
Right. You've answered, yeah, fine.
But you can't, partnership's not about money, partnership's about your commitment. And unfortunately, us and the police had the commitment, others didn't and Graham's trying to change that and I can see that's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Another question?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for this very thorough report, it took me some time to read through and try and digest. And I also know there's a lot of expertise and committed expertise down at that end of the table and you're representing other committed expertise. But when I was looking through, it struck me that a lot of years have passed prior since nineteen ninety eight and then it was two thousand and six. And seeing all these various groups, seven groups there and four county groups there and four problem solving groups, they're all separate and it's getting a more and more complex situation. And I can't in my gut feel that this can be an efficient organisation, because of the various procedures that will have to be used to sort of overcome perceived boundaries of things. So do we need to have a re look? I appreciate in a way, in answering some of these things, you're already well aware of changes in older organisations and so on and obviously that's problems already, but I'm just wondering whether it has come, sorry, come time for a complete fresh look at things. That doesn't mean to say you throw everything out of the way, but you look at what is residually good and you seek for better ways of working together, this is how I, but before I jump to a conclusion, have we got any even sample statistics which says, right, we've got our community, what was it?
Child, yeah.
Community trigger. And how long has it taken to resolve that particular problem? And who has been involved? And that's what I'm trying to get at, because that in itself could define a sort of efficiency. And I'm just wondering whether that sort of material is there or in which case I would say that we should try and produce that sort of material.
I think, I think that, Councillor, I think that's a very good challenge on the sort of, how do you measure the efficiencies and how it's affected? I think there is that information there, but when you look at these types of subjects, we talked about mass homicide reviews, we have more experience than the triggers, it becomes a statutory responsibility. So we would look at it and go, is it right that it's taken four years to go from the original homicide to publishing a final report? And I think we would look through it and I think you would say, it isn't the most efficient, but you have, it's a statutory responsibility.
I appreciate the outcome, it's statutory.
Yeah, so we have, so you're right, we should always challenge that and I think that's come back, certainly I think with Annie's experience of DHRs in prison, we've approached the last one in a very different way and Kevin's challenged, we've challenged the Home Office, because you are correct. And I think one of the key things that I think has improved efficiency is the SOC actually held that, has now brought the Community Safety Partnership and actually said, hang on a minute, there is a real difference you can make and being made aware and sharing that information, you know, across agencies that perhaps sat with the police before, has really given an impetus and a focus for JAG and CHARM to be more efficient. But I think, in answer to your question, Councillor Lee, I think we can do that, but it's about us challenging as a group how we can affect that sort of statutory responsibility that sits with us. We talked with reducing the number of meetings, but that reduces the partnership. So we had looked at saying, hang on a minute, let's meet less, because this is not achieving anything. But the reality is then it really had an impact on our tactical groups, on the groups that were actually delivering the benefit and the need to meet, the partnership, it's about giving time and it's about us sitting around the table saying, let's commit to this, that makes a difference. So we're constantly looking at it, I wouldn't say it's the most efficient, but I don't know.
No, it isn't, but I think the issue is most of it is statutory and for example, domestic homicide, the Home Office owned the investigation. So you're challenging somebody who in law owns the investigation in Waverley. So we, you know, I've refused to investigate some, we've written to them and said, we will not investigate until we know this, this and this. You know, we have massively pushed the boundaries, we've gone in conflict with a coroner who we thought was going to call us up in front of the court for contempt of court, as we refused to, you know, we really have. At the end of the day, it's statutory, they called the shots. Is it efficient? No, it's not. It really, really isn't. How can we have an investigation for four years? And some of them, none of them are the same. Domestic homicide, you're supposed to look at what you can learn, tell everybody what you can learn, so you prevent it in the future. The five in Waverley couldn't have been more different if you gave, you know, someone to write something up, it's so different. So a simple one has taken us four years, but there are huge complications, we have to do it certain times, we have to do it certain manners, the paperwork, you know, it puts some of our committed lead into shame, honestly.
And that's one triggering, obviously, a very complex one, I mean, there's always other triggers.
And one of the things, you know, the crime disorder, it's all statutory.
It has to be statutory, you've got to produce it, as I say, I think, there's different ways of it.
And we totally agree with you and we often try to do it our way, but do it close enough that we're not going to get hauled up by the Home Office.
And all of those groups within that have been looked at, so the CHARM group in particular is a very, very new group, it's previously seen and it's reviewed itself effectively, centrally it's been reviewed to look at actually, is this focusing on the right thing? It wasn't, it was focusing on perpetrators, it wasn't focusing on victims. And this is the bit that I was talking about a moment ago, that victims will potentially be victims again to another perpetrator. And that has been looked at and that's incorporated other things. So they're constantly being reviewed, constantly being refreshed and that's countywide as well as locally, to make sure we've got that consistent approach.
Not that, but it is looking at themselves by themselves.
Yeah, you, no, I think that's a very valid comment, there's value to having someone external look at that, but it's a wider structure than just this partnership, I think.
Can I ask how long has the structure been in place? How many years have you been operating the structure?
The crime disorder has been since ninety eight, since legislation, it was a legal requirement. Now, it's slightly changed in names and strategic partnership and there was a local part, so it's more still on, the CHARM is very new, but there was always different groups had looked at, places and people, and it's only recently, your time really, it's moved into the CHARM, you know.
One thing that worried me a little bit, was you said at one time, you're very short of funds and you hadn't to bid for funds through the PCC. That of course involves extra work.
Yep.
You've got busy people.
And it does.
I'm not making that idea.
And it does.
This Chief Councillor will be given the authority to decide, he's got some amount of money and we can say, and then you don't have to.
It comes back to what it was.
Yeah, but it comes back to what it was, you know, you challenge that process of saying, you know, the bureaucracy of making a bid, something specific and then it comes with strings, whereas really what you want, as Councillor Dean said, is funding to actually focus on social behaviour and crime disorder in your area. But you are correct, I think it's a way of trying to create measurement of how this funding has been spent, but it has a sort of almost opposite effect of creating more work and more focus, it doesn't actually assist with the wider issues.
We'd have to spend time justifying the PPD's office.
Yeah.
I convince them all the time, so I just ask the Chief Constable to decide.
Unfortunately, he doesn't hope the person who has the power has the budget.
Okay. Can I, before I, I could probably get about another five minutes or so to go, but there is a serious crime machine in Farnham that you'll be well aware of, that three of the cash machines have been raided in the last period and, you know, very brutally, you're diggers digging at half the Halifax Bank and so on. And what the local people say to me and I'm sure say to other councillors, that's never used to happen when we had the police station in Farnham. Because your guys may have to come from Godving and what have you and then by the time that happens, the perpetrators are long gone, you know. I don't know if anything's done about that, but.
It's someone we're looking at.
It's not helping the public perception at all, is it?
Chair, if I may interject, the police station has gone, the police station's gone in various of our towns within Waverley. However, we still have a police presence. So Farnham, for instance, you mentioned, we are co-located with the fire service. We don't have a front counter, we don't have a big sign outside that says police and maybe that's something we should have, because that's a deterrent in itself. But to suggest that the nearest officer is Godving is wrong. Offices, that is a twenty four seven office, it is used along those lines and there is always a police presence around the whole of the borough. We have issues, we are the largest borough within the county, one hundred and thirty three square miles. And it is a case that, yes, we have the geography to negotiate as well, which is never great, but we do have the offices out there, we do have them available. Another one in the public perception, Hazlemeh, the bank down there, Santander, got dealt with. There was a rumor going around that it took us forty four minutes to get there. What wasn't known was that there'd been an officer for two and a half hours waiting with a smashed window, literally around the corner. He left seventeen minutes before the raid took place and it took officers fourteen minutes to physically get to the scene, but in that time, you also had officers plotting up, going to different locations where a vehicle is likely to escape route, if you like. So we had officers around the location before physically going there. The cash machine, if you like, has gone, let's get them as they move around. So whilst the public perception, social media, brilliant for disinformation, it's there and it says, it doesn't necessarily paint a bigger picture, exactly what we are doing. So yes, the police station's gone and I'm very sad to have seen it gone, because that's where I started my service. However, we are still there and that's a very key point, I think, is of getting out to the community.
I don't think it is, I'm not being apocryphal, what I tell you, but your predecessors have made a presentation to this committee some time ago and he explained to us the number of officers that you had on duty overnight and it was frighteningly small and he actually said that you sometimes had to redeploy your officers to help out Gylford and help out some other area if they were struggling, you know, so it's not criticism of the police at all, you're just under resourced for what you're trying to do.
Policing is stretched, let's make no bones about it, it's stretched, we have still got significant resource if it's needed out there. Certain issues and that the issue you're experiencing in Farnham at the moment is one
Certain issues and that the issue you're experiencing in Farnham at the moment is one of them are really, really difficult to tackle and really, really difficult to deal with. They take time and unfortunately, when it's that dramatic and that in the open air, time is not something that you've necessarily got. However, what I can assure you of, we are working on them. We're also working with the the cash machine operators because they've got a responsibility here as well. There are a number of things that cash machine operators can do which reduce the risk. Simple barriers around the front, for a start, would prevent it, but it's all cost. You can put you can put ink in the machines, you can put trackers in the machines.
But destroy the cash if it's.
Exactly, which reduces the risk. But needless to say, we are aware of it, as I'm sure you can understand, it's been all over the papers. Yes, we've had a lot, but we are, we are working on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Patricia. Thank you, Jen. My question has largely been answered. I don't think it's a shame that this very valuable and important work is not better known to the community, to the residents, who I don't think have very much understanding of what's happening. I suppose the question following on from others is, a lot of the issues that you're dealing with, you read the newspapers, watch the television, that sort of thing, are problems and not only in Waverley, they're all over countrywide. Question, do, what is the level of cooperation with other boroughs and districts who I presume are carrying out similar sort of? And how do you work together? Because these criminals are coming into Waverley, as you said.
So it's, so there's a partnership, speaking from the Community Safety Partnership point of view, we work very, very closely with Guilford, which is obviously our neighbouring borough. The Community Safety Board, which Mr Deena is a representative of, has representation for all of the CSPs. So that information and that learning from a partnership point of view is shared. So we're we're learning from experiences. We've got a tool which is being used more and more frequently now called Safety Net, which is a partnership product which allows us to share intelligence and share information between partners. So from a Surrey point of view, that is absolutely happening. From a policing point of view, of course, we share, a lot of our work is done regionally now. So we share very closely with Hampshire, we share very closely with Thames Valley, Sussex, we're collaborated with and Surrey. So the the partnerships are better than they've ever been, both in the Community Safety Partnership point of view and in the policing point of view.
And I'd like to follow on from the sort of the Safety Net, that's a tool where basically information on a on an individual or an area can be recorded and that, I don't know, very much correct me, but certainly Waverley as a as a council has adopted that and we have our housing teams regularly putting information in, environmental health team, so that gives, helps give a much wider picture to the police or anyone going to those places, their individuals, and that share, that information being shared makes it work much more effectively.
Kevin. I was just going to finish two points on that conversation about whether these type of offences happened in the past. I'm a little bit older than Graham, I can assure you in my police past, many a times a type of offence. It it's not, it's not new in any way or shape or form. And after the Hazelmeir A T M, I did quite a bit of work and work with the police to look at what the response was like. The bit you didn't mention was I think within two minutes, seven cars had been plotted out around the area, you know, at three o'clock in the morning. To have, you know, seven vehicles deployed within two minutes to that scene at different locations, I actually thought it was quite impressive. But of course, that sort of thing doesn't make good news stories, they just weren't the bad bits, but actually it was a really, really good response on the night in my view. And I'd be first to criticize because I'm.
You're allowed.
But actually, I have to say, it was a very good response.
Do you know where that digger come from? Do we know that?
Sorry?
The digger that has the Halifax and the Oldham, where did it come from?
Close by, close by.
Close by.
So there's there's some more and, I mean, I laugh about it, but actually they do come from very close by and there's something to learn there about actually.
If one of these things goes missing.
Exactly. But also, they're going missing immediately before, so secure your, secure your plan quickly.
So they're probably close before.
Yeah, they're, you're not going to drive, you're not going to drive far in a machine of that size without being seen.
Okay. Any final questions?
Well, but obviously it seemed to happen.
We are running over time, such a, such an interesting subject. And I think we have to bring it to an end and thank you all very much for the very useful presentation, a very important subject. And it is complicated, but it's very important. So thank you.
Thank you for it.
You're very welcome to stay.
Are you ready? Thank you very much.
Okay, let's have a look at the training services and it's Kelvin again.
Well, I'm going to very briefly introduce Adele, who's Waverley Training Services Manager here. But basically, we came, we came before you, probably, what do you think, six to eight months ago now?
It's about November.
Last year, to talk about Waverley Training Services in its entirety. And at that point, we were still with a required improvement Ofsted grade, which was in a sense something that Council Weekly challenged us on, and it was something that was hanging over our heads. In that intermediate period, we have now had an Ofsted inspection and we felt it was appropriate to come back and report on that. And I thought, and Adele was obviously keen to come back and and talk to you again and talk you through what's happened in the Ofsted inspection and where we we plan to go going forward. So pass it over to Adele.
Thank you, Kelvin. So yeah, I think most of you were here back in November, but there's a few new faces. So historically, Waverley Training Services since nineteen ninety-nine has had eight inspections from, the name has changed, but it ultimately is Ofsted. And all of those required improvement were classes inadequate. As a training provider, this does make it very difficult because it means that you are bound to be inspected every twelve to twenty-four months. So we were inspected in twenty sixteen, which was the grades that we discussed in the last meeting. And overall, we were required improvement, although we did get some twos or apprenticeships in personal development. In twenty seventeen, Ofsted wrote to all training providers and said that they were going to focus on the management of subcontractors and the observation teaching learning in twenty eighteen. Maybe where the Waverley Training Services does subcontract with four training providers, about eighty percent of the provision, so we actually act as a lead provider for the E S F A, who fund apprenticeships in the study programme. So for us to get this letter at the end of twenty seventeen, like every other training provider did, it was like, great, they're going to focus on the two largest areas. And actually, the management of subcontractors in the twenty sixteen inspection proved to be one of our areas that definitely required improvement. So on the eighth of June, just as I was loading the car for my weekend in Dorset, I got a phone call and to say that the inspection would start on Tuesday. So you get very little notification. So on Tuesday morning, six inspectors arrived and and basically you have a lead inspector and then you have other leads for each area of judgment. And one of the inspectors said a really good thing to me, it's like a three-legged stool when we come out to see you. And they need to read it in our self-assessment report and our quality improvement plan, they need to see it and they need to hear it. And of course, if you take a leg away from a three-legged stool, it all falls apart. So the other change in comparison to our twenty sixteen inspection is, when we were inspected in twenty sixteen, we had just under three hundred learners. And in twenty eighteen, we were just under a thousand. And growth wasn't something we were really looking to do, but suddenly, you know, one minute is three hundred and the next thousand, you know how these things happen. So after four long days of them looking at our observation and teaching learning, the management of our subcontractor provision, our policies, our safeguarding, our prevent, the feedback was that we had been awarded grade two good across the board in every area. So in in nineteen years and after nine inspections, as you can imagine, I was a little bit relieved. So I'm thinking about you, thinking, she's going to ask me. And unfortunate, well, not unfortunate, a provider has a history of grade three and four, which is what Waverley Training Services had, how it skipped to outstanding. But the really positive news was, we're not actually that far away from outstanding. And for me, that was really important because I didn't want to scrape those twos, I wanted to be a strong two and then now we can focus on making us an outstanding training provider. So hopefully, you've all seen the the report that was submitted to Management Board. And there are things we need to do. Getting the grade two good does mean that actually, we're not going to have an inspection in the next twelve to twenty-four months. We're probably looking at a one-day monitoring visit within the next three to four years. So I feel it's nice now because we have that time, you know, and every Friday when the phone rings, I'm like, who is that? So hopefully you've had a chance to read the report. Happy to answer any questions about the inspection, but we did score extremely good high grade two. And I think in the report, I've summarized as much as I can, but I'm not very summarizing, what we need to do to now take us forward and that we can worry Waverley Training Services to hopefully, you know, a much larger percentage of the number of learners, even though it wasn't the intention back in twenty sixteen.
So just one, one thing before we move on to questions is, you know, I worked very hard in this, some of Adele and her team a little bit, that I tried not to make this report sound negative that we're not outstanding, which is where it was, where it was reading initially. This is a tremendous achievement from Adele and we were fortunate enough to that, to celebrate that this afternoon with the team and thank them for all the hard work because it it is tough and I'm sure there's people around here that have gone through inspections and the like, but you know, we shouldn't under, I was, I'm so tremendously proud of Adele and the team. But what we did think for yourselves, it was important that we we clearly spelt out where we've done well, but also what we need to improve on because we want to be coming back to here with the scoot and to be outstanding in the next visit. So that was, I was going to say, it was a tremendous effort and I'm really proud of it, but pass on from there.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think you'd to be greatly congratulated, well done on getting good. But I read that one of the problems is the management area. So how are you going to go about trying to get a sort of the equivalent of broader governance or something or whatever it is that you need to get yourselves up?
Prior to the inspection, we had already identified that as something that we needed to improve. And as a result of that, we've suggested a new governance structure with management board, if you like, acting as the executive governance model. So quarterly, we will be acting in that capacity with Cassidyus and they will be bringing to us a sort of stopper's management board and immediately reconvene as as the governance board of the of W T S. So although it might sound, the report, it's a huge oversight, but in reality, it was more about oversight, it was more about oversight and putting, putting some formality into that governance structure.
If I could just say, Chair, because I was interviewed just after the process, I was one of the people. And actually, one of the comments about the management actually was in relation to the course content. And the question that was put to me was, how do I influence and change the course content on apprenticeship? Which actually my role is as a representative, I'm not an expert in a course on whatever the many courses, but that was actually deemed as a criticism that I didn't change the courses through my recommendations. But when you think, the way we thought about it, well, if that's as much as you can come up with, then actually, that's that's still a good result.
That was a criticism from Ofsted.
Yeah. And that's what, that was part of about the governance was that I personally didn't change the content on courses through my one-to-ones with Adele, where we talked about finance, staff and all the issues you'd expect. They said, so when do you talk about the actual content of the course? Well, if there was an issue, Adele would come to me. So it's a criticism which you think, okay, they clearly feel that is a role of an elected representative and we will try and build that into our structure. And that's all it is, I can accept that.
And the one other thing that was coming out was the scrutiny. So how, we were blessed with overview and scrutiny and having someone else look at it. So what I think the big improvement, and Louise will talk about it later, is now in the performance report, you actually have some K P I's on how the W T S service is doing now, whereas, you know, to some extent, it was, I like to consider it a hidden, a hidden gem that has grown, but the reality is, it should be scrutinized by yourself and that will come through. Obviously, we'll have our own governance, we've got management board with the quarterly, we have one-to-ones with the portfolio holder, but also on a quarterly basis, you as a scrutiny team will see how we're dealing with overall performance of what is our job, is our apprentices or our learners achieving their goals. And that is something that we're now pulling out on those performance reports. And also, I have the opportunity as a head of service to bring to your attention issues that I see in certain areas of my service. And again, that would be something that you can, you can track through the performance much more readily now you've reviewed that and improved on that. So that's another way that they were saying, were we scrutinized? When did yourselves influence? Exactly what Kevin was saying, the learner, when did you have that impact? So.
We should be scrutinizing the outcomes of this.
Yes.
It's not up to governments or schools to interfere with the curriculum, schools have done. And where they do, Ofsted would criticize them actually.
There's always ways not to get outstanding.
You want some in-depth advice from outside experts and that, but it shouldn't be councils.
And one of the things we're meant to be responsive to is the need. So for example, we were contacted by A A T, which is the Councilship Awarding Body, and they said there's a lack of availability in accountability training. So we went for a process of due diligence and we, we, we were accredited with that. So we're responsive to the employer's requirements. So I can't say to A A T, oh, we're not, you know, we can't respond to that because
So Patricia?
Thank you. Very briefly, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If I could say, in my special year, when I was privileged to be Mayor of Waverley, I did actually attend a number, on a number of occasions, training services and the awards. And spending a lot of time talking to some very, very nice young people who probably wouldn't have achieved very much elsewhere, and also spending some time speaking to employers, I have to say that people were actually delighted with the service. And I think that the results, even though Ofsted were not very kind, were actually good.
No, and thank you for that. And I think I'm going to put Adele on the spot, but the the key element that we responded on is our achievements. So if I'm a, I'm a head of service, I sometimes forget that actually it's the learner that's important and what they're delivering. And I can't remember, from last year, what were our performance?
Our direct delivery for Waverley Training Services apprenticeship programme, we just have the figure, well, the figures in, we're just about to add a few more, but our overall achievement for apprenticeships directly delivered by Waverley Training Services, eighty-two percent. And Ofsted also measured timely. So did, if you said they were going to do it in a year, did you do it in a year or three months either side? And that was actually at eighty-one percent. And and thank you very much for your congratulations. And what was really great about this Ofsted inspection, they didn't always recognize that Waverley Training Services are for the community and they do take learners that other training providers wouldn't accept. And that maybe that would be the only achievement that they ever achieved in their life. So that that was good because we did have some issues previously, but we did help a lot of young people who wouldn't have achieved.
So that's over eighty percent achieving their apprenticeship and then we track into employment or further education as well.
For a further twelve months.
I mean, it's a great, the Ofsted have and that.
It's four. So we're in the right.
You're on two paths.
Can I ask a very, a very basic question? How do the young people know about Waverley Training Services? As you say, they didn't get anywhere else. So who puts them in that?
So we have one business development officer, which is something that we, you know, part of our restructure suggested that we need to look at. He would go to visit employers, he would go to careers events, we appear on the National Apprenticeship Service website. So somebody says, I want to do an apprenticeship and they want to do an apprenticeship within ten miles of my home address, as long as it feels better area, then we would appear on that search. So we work with schools, we work with Job Centre Plus, we work with youth support teams and we have lots of inquiries.
Because until I got this, all I knew was that occasionally we offered here apprentices.
Oh, exactly.
That, I mean, that's, I had not a clue that this service took place. And you see, ninety-nine percent of the people in Waverley wouldn't have a clue that you're running this.
But as we said, we have over nine hundred learners that we're looking at. And also, but one of the things that came out, and I was just looking at to achieve outstanding, but it comes back to communication, we've got to smarten up our use of social media. You know, we've got to start using a little bit more of the channels, the younger people like myself. But, you know, we've got to embrace that way of communicating more bravely. You know, it's difficult because I think Inspector Smith was saying earlier, social media can, you know, can be a lot of disinformation, but the reality is it is a way that we can communicate our services more widely. But as Adele said, let's be honest, we are at the capacity, we really, we don't, there is no desire to grow. And the growth we've had over the last couple of years was really from the ESFA using us as a lead provider. So the national saying, actually, we trust you as an organization to oversee these subcontractors. It wasn't a desire to grow particularly, was it?
No, because we wanted to build the foundation, we wanted to get it right and then grow.
But social media is definitely that, something we need to look at.
Brilliant. Thank you. I understand you've already moved into the memorial hall or you're about to and is that going to be big enough?
Yes, so we've got, we are, well, I'm to all the team, we showed the team once, they were tremendously excited about the move because we think the pump house, all its greatness where it was, it's a little bit hidden away and it's not. Yeah, it's falling down a little bit and it doesn't really demonstrate the service of being done. But we are looking to move next month. So we've got to move the IT at the right time. So it's about, you know, moving them at the time that we think will be least disruptive. So we're looking at October when they'll move, but the team, well, we were there today as a celebration of our Ofsted result and we're, you know, very excited about, they're very excited about the move. And it just shows the investment that we as a council are putting into young people and that apprenticeship arm. So yeah, it's, yeah.
I was really impressed, massively impressed.
I've been lucky to show Kevin's been around last week, you know, and we will be meeting. But it's something that.
We're going to come along as well.
Absolutely.
I think people want to look at it, they should go.
It just shows, but it shows the first, for Waverley Training Services specifically, it shows that commitment. The young, you know, it will be an area of real sort of pride for those young people. And I think that overlap with the older population there, I think we're really excited about that. A place where everything is nice, whereas at the moment, we're a little bit stuck out and no one can see us, sort of thing.
I think, as you said before, Kevin, this is something we really didn't have to do.
Correct.
The light sports centre, so it's to council's credit, they're doing this and doing it well. Congratulations. And that's what we will be seeing outstanding in the future.
Like, we've only just covered the morning, I was only there for a day. Kevin was interviewing, I think you tell.
I'm still nine, so I really love it.
One of the problems you've got is in the farm, the standard for schools is outstanding. Every school is outstanding in the farm.
It's, you know.
Maybe you need to move somebody else somewhere.
And that, but that's where you see, we've got a close relationship with, because we do take, so a lot of those students are delivering well, but some do struggle in those really high achieving schools. And we are a good resource, we link well with those schools to say those kids perhaps have had the tougher time in formal education over the last five years can be on the ways, you know, a lot of ways where we can, they can get, they can be really active members of our community. And that's where Waverley Training Services works well with those really high achieving schools.
There are a couple of schools in the farm, but for people with additional needs and they're also outstanding.
Absolutely, yeah.
They've got to move on, if anybody wants to have a panel question. So thank you very much for that.
Well done again.
So I think it's now going to ask Yasmin to talk about the overview of scrutiny of the annual report.
Thank you, Chair. So some members of the committee will remember that Waverley undertook a review of its ONS arrangements in two thousand and sixteen, which resulted in fundamental changes to the way Waverley does scrutiny. And the report in front of you, the annual scrutiny report, reflects on this first year of the new arrangements, including the successes of the new process and the improvements still to be made. And I'd like to thank the councillors who were able to complete the survey, either in two thousand and sixteen or the most recent version in two thousand and eighteen and which informed this report. And I'd like to emphasize that I always welcome feedback from members on scrutiny arrangements or scrutiny more generally. So if any members do have any comments and weren't able to complete the survey, you haven't missed your chance to contribute. And the report observes a lot of the successes of the past year and it also highlights some of the areas in which ONS could do better. And publicity and public engagement was one of the main areas identified for improvement, as well as involving external partners. As we continue to embed the new process, these will be two of the main areas of focus. And as the report, as the first report since the new arrangements, I invite members to comment on the report, particularly its format and layout, to see what you think of the style that's been written and to reflect on the past year of ONS. So thank you, Chairman.
Any question, Yasmin?
Thank you, Chairman. Personally, I like the report. I feel it's succinct, very comprehensive and it's in an attractive format. Can I just ask a question, and it is actually about question seven on page eighty-five? And the question is, do you think the public have been involved in the scrutiny process? Now, do we have a clear view as to what is the nature of that and what we intend the nature of the involvement to be?
And so I think, but it's very important, one of the main principles from the Centre of Public Scrutiny, which is sort of the body that is expertise on local government scrutiny. And one of the principles in that is public engagement and to reflect and amplify the voices of the public. And so I think public engagement is really important for overview and scrutiny to reflect the concerns of the public and to represent the public in that way. I think that would really be the involvement of the public that I would expect overview and scrutiny to have. I think we've, at the moment, we've got, we haven't, we have got some ways that the public can get involved, obviously the meetings are open to the public to attend. And we do have something on the website that invites suggestions for scrutiny to look at, so there are different, there are different opportunities there for the public to get involved. But I do think it's, obviously it's improved since two thousand and fifty, but there are steps to make to improve it further, I think.
But I'm very conscious that there's plenty on the website and yes, we've seen these deals here on a few occasions, there's plenty on the website, but you can't take, you can take the horses to water, but you can't make it between.
That's true.
So I'm just wondering, you know, if there is anything that you've got experience of with other councils or perhaps even the private industry where, yes, sorry.
Sorry, three to seven. So you probably, well, you'll be aware probably from the Value for Money and the Customer Services ONS committee are about to embark on a public engagement exercise over the budget. So, I mean, there are ways of doing it if you think that this committee has got a subject area that you think, well, we need to learn a bit more about this. So actually you could do public engagement that way rather than going the other way, if you like, actually go out there and do some research and find out what the public have had certain things. It's just an option.
Thank you very much.
I think if we had had more time, we would have tried to involve the public more in the task group that we held last year. We finished up talking just to professionals really and that was extremely valuable and it worked pretty well. But we had hoped to perhaps talk to the public, we never really had the time to do that. Okay, it's been discussed at the ONS board from time to time, actually, and perhaps we should have another discussion about that.
I found it to be, yeah, it's only agenda.
Okay, any other points or questions, right? I mean, I'll just say, I personally think it works a bit better than the big ONS committees that used to sit in the council chamber, you know. I think there's a slightly more informal environment, the smaller committees, I think it worked well. And certainly there's a lot more member involvement than there used to be. And I think the task groups are good as well. So I think it's working better for the ONS. Any other comments from anybody?
I agree. I really enjoyed the whole process, learned a lot and I think it will ultimately benefit everybody, including our residents.
And I really think, Mr. Chairman, there's far more participation by members in this format rather than in the chamber as well.
In the chamber, it was a forum when we'd made those speeches, you get more of a discussion here, you know, and a track of discussion, which is more valuable. And I'm sure it's the same with the other.
I would agree and I think the, because the officers are so much closer, that you then, because they're the experts, therefore it's, you know, you feel you can ask any question. I don't mind asking any basic question because I know that, I don't mind the answer. But when you're in a formal bit, you just feel slightly reserved about asking.
It's more satisfying now being a member.
I think so. Well, I certainly feel that, actually. Right, thank you very much. So that's items to corporate performance report. I think we have chief executives who are going to talk to us in the front. Is it Tom going to?
No, I'm going to leave it to you.
Chairman, thank you, councillors, good evening. I'm very pleased to present to you the quarterly performance report in its new format. So the format has been developed by managers and also in consultation with the overview committee chairman. And whereas you're used to receiving a quarterly report that's focused very much on key performance indicators for each service and particularly the services that you look at, this one report that goes to all of the committees now presents the wider perspective on performance, yes, the key performance indicators, but also service plan actions, internal audit recommendations, complaints, workforce data, finance. So it gives a much more rounded picture about how we're doing, about the things that we're bothered about, things that we're proud about and the things that we're focusing on in the next quarter. So all of the committees will get this single report, but of course you'll still focus on the services within all remits, so communities and licensing in particular. You'll also see in these reports more of a narrative, so it's not just numbers and charts. There's more of a narrative describing how the last three months in that quarter have gone and also the issues that are keeping us awake at night as we try and implement the council's plans for the next period. Now, obviously it is the first report in the new format, so there will be some further tweaks to make, I'm sure, and your feedback will be helpful to that as well. And really, just to summarize, overall, performance in quarter one has been good. Clearly you can see in there some areas that within your, the services that you're scrutinizing, where you might want to discuss a lot. We've got relevant, some relevant managers here as well who will try and help us with that detail. So overall, I think this is a positive step forward, hopefully gives you more balanced overall perspective on performance across the council. And I welcome your comments on it, both in terms of format and content.
I'd just like to say that the format is good, but I always think that the best thing is you only ever hear the negative from members of the public. So it's complaints, complaints, complaints and the complaints are halved. So what more can you say?
Thank you very much.
Isn't it, nobody ever says what's good, it's only the bad thing. So, you know, I think brilliant on that bit, love. I like it.
Yes, the format I really do appreciate, it's streets ahead of what it used to have. Can I just ask, Louise, on page one oh five, this is the complaints, where we've got the tabular information, our total complaints is eighty-five and we have the blue vertical in the graphical representation is eighty-three, I should be reading that as eighty-five, I shouldn't I? Now it's interpreted.
So I need Nora here. Oh, that's why, that's why you scrutinize. Yeah, I can notice that. I can't see, yes, I think you're probably right. Can I come back to you just? Yes, you're right.
Yes, please, if you would.
Yes, of course.
Probably just typing out a.
That was no excuse. I think that's a big thing where I was trying to introduce a system, this computer paper was used and there were numbers on there and the senior manager said, well, that doesn't add up. So he tore it up, threw it in the bin and my project was put back by about two years. And that's because the silly idiots hadn't produced it all, they'd produced it on computer paper, but the computer hadn't generated it all.
It's absolutely true, Dennis, that you read the report.
I can come back on ONS. Now, as you said, Tom, this is the first quarter. So will there be an element of a rolling performance or some comparison with this first quarter next time around? Can I just ask?
So, yeah, so elements of this will reflect trend data. You can see in some of the, some of the data already, we're actually counting out over five quarters, for example, so that you can look at trend over the period of the year, but you can also look at the same period in the previous year. So it hardly, it depends on the indicator itself. Some things make more sense to look at a trend, others make more sense to look at, you know, something like that seasonal. So what we're trying to do is fit the right methodology to the right indicator to tell you the actual story that you want, that you want to understand.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, please?
On something very silly, Mr. Chairman, could I suggest they make the column, because that's margin wider, so it's target and not tag with a T on the B.
A comment from you, I think it's good that all the committees have seen the same report because there's some things that inevitably do go across committees, but, you know. And in fact, we had the discussion at a pre-meeting about that. There was one thing in particular we spoke about that went across committees, I can't remember quite well what it was. None of us can remember. Because we did see it as a slight problem, didn't we?
Yes.
Right, no, I think it's a, I think it's a big improvement. Any other final points, please? Okay, well, thank you. Now on to the follow-up programme, which Yasmin's going to present to us.
Thank you, Chairman. And so it's the normal standing item of the committee work programme. You can see on page one hundred and thirty-six of your agendas, we've got the agenda for today's meeting, September the fourth column along. Apologies, I put October two thousand and eighteen, you'll see next to the Leisure Centre contract management review, we haven't got a meeting in October two thousand and eighteen. So I think I'll change that to November, which is our next meeting. We did talk a little bit in the pre-meeting and we did have Natalie from Surrey, she's a prevention, Communities and Prevention Officer, come to this committee actually in the June meeting and she did an item on loneliness, which I think the committee found quite interesting. So after request of the committee and in particular the vice chair, I will be contacting Natalie again to see if we can have something else on loneliness brought to the committee, perhaps more in-depth study in November. So you'll see that October changed to November and then November for the loneliness item as well. And I'm happy to take any suggestions for items to add to the committee work programme for members or it could be, it could be November, it could be future items more longer term. But yeah, I'm happy to hear from members, it's their work programme. So if there's anything they'd like to add or remove or a bit more detail on, then I'm happy to hear from members.
I can just say one thing we discussed at the pre-meeting, we need to keep following up on last year's health and quality support. And we made recommendations to Waverley, to Surrey and to the clinical commissioning groups and we need to ensure that these have been. and we need to ensure that these have been followed up, and Liz agreed that perhaps at the next meeting we could get a report on what's happening with Waverley, and told us that Tom, the chief executive, was very keen to push this forward within Waverley, which is good. But we also want to see what's happening with Surrey and the CCGs perhaps at future meetings.
Chairman, if I could just add, no, obviously, we've now shared the Health and Equalities report with our, our partners, Gilmour and Waverley ICP, oh, I see, yeah, I always get confused with the acting. I've, I've embraced that and are looking forward to feeding back on their actions that were passed them. But as a consequence, for my sins, I will now, I am stepping forward and will be chairing their prevention group. So that will, so that will help ensure that the good work that was taken forward as part of the Health and Equality Group, I should, in theory, be able to feed back quarterly on, on how we're doing against that. So that would be one of, a task I can take forward and bring back on that.
And, Mr. Chairman, you also mentioned before plotting, or tracking, should I say, how the government's latest restrictions on gambling might be working their way through. And I think our own licensing board might be involved, and see whether we need to come in later, perhaps, to add our value.
Yes, yeah.
That's a possible future task group, yeah.
Absolutely, I can keep the committee updated on the national changes that have been made and the impact of those, and we can, yeah, have a look at that, what impact we expect that to have on Waverley, and if there are any more further studies that we think need doing, and any changes that Waverley, yeah, thinks appropriate. So I'll keep, can we keep the committee updated on that, and we can add that to the forward programme as a sort of a, to be confirmed, because it depends on dates, I'll be going ahead and do that.
Any other points from any members?
Can I just go back to the performance report, it's page one two seven. Finance update in respect of the planning services area. The underachievement of building control and the investment of five thousand, and I know that's a lot of stuff. But it is quite a bit of a serious shortfall, is that, and I think we were, I thought quite a few months ago that building control would be, well, it was being significantly enhanced in terms of management and staff, and so something's not quite right. Do we know sort of what is, what's perceived to be wrong and what plans are in place?
I, I'm, I'm just checking with Yasmin, but my feeling is that it's in the forward programme for the Valley for Money Committee to have a feedback prompt ahead of the, you know, the managers for building control, I'll look at that.
They've, they've had that sort of system a couple of times, haven't they? They do have a keen eye on building control, but yes, it's picked up by that committee.
Thank you for that.
I think the problem here, if I'm right here, is saying this, that developers can choose their own building control these days. And by and large, they seem to be choosing both anyone's, um, from the council, so it puts Waverley in a very difficult position to compete. If we are seen as more thorough and being a job, developers prefer to choose someone a little bit less thorough. It's a fault in the system, actually, quite frankly. Yeah, I mean, you're an expert in this.
I have to say that Waverley's building control department are very highly thought of, even in the local industry. The, the local builders are, you know, they, they're quite pleased, and most of the guys, you know, down the corridor are very friendly, very helpful. But as you say, you know, the, the barracks and the, the big developers of, of this world, they can go to a private company, and I think the thought is that a private company, because the pound signs are more in front of their eyes than perhaps our chaps, they can possibly be more lenient.
I've seen one or two terrible examples where building control has just not done at all well. And, and people get away with shorty work, but it results. And I'm sure our people don't let them away with it.
They sure don't, my building control came four times to my garage.
Okay.
Because, because they are fair, they're strictly but fair and helpful.
Okay, and any other questions?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think we were also thinking that at some point we need to have a progress report again on Meals on Wheels and how everything is surviving.
Community meals, you mean?
Yeah.
Community.
Oh, well, I'll tell you.
Councillors.
A service.
It's the rebranding, not the.
No, wheels. So I think we're, we're just, it's quite interesting what ONS group that sits on. Obviously, this, this community, and the community's launched the community meal service across the borough, but it's run by, so there's, some of it's run in-house, but, so we've confirmed that. But certainly, I think we should be feeding back to the ONS, ONS on how it's going. And I think we'll be, probably the new year will be another good one, because we launched it, and that'll be two years then, so, yeah.
My turn, did we change the name, or has it changed universally or everywhere, from Meals on Wheels?
Yeah, we, I think it was, it's sort of a, I don't know if it's an outdated brand or whatever, but it was certainly part of when we're launching it from each of the community centres, that they, we thought the community meal service really demonstrated a little more clearly what it, what it is, basically.
Because that's, that's what I, I mean, to me, community meal service is, you go to.
Yes.
You know, somewhere the clock has to have your meals, but Meals on Wheels takes it to your house.
Well, that, you know, it's, it's called, we call it the community health service, and they, and that's, it's, but it's, you know, you have a fair point. Meals on Wheels, you know, that's often a slip, a slip of the tongue, but in essence, it is delivering a fresh meal to those most vulnerable in our, in our communities, and I think having a feedback on how that's going, you know, would be great.
I may be wrong, but I think the name is generally used by a voluntary organisation, often supported by council, so they've got the sort of proprietary right to give that name.
Oh, yes.
It's been carried on using the name for a council on service, it probably could cause some confusion.
Oh, right, yeah.
And the charity might know, it's a, it's concern, isn't it?
Oh, I don't know, it's council.
Where I used to, at Limbok, it was Meals on Wheels, we ran it, we, we got a grant, it was East Hampshire, a tiny one. You know, we did it ourselves.
Oh, did you?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe we're, in terms of using it, I thought they made their proprietary.
There might well be a, you know.
Anyway, any, any final points, I think we've had it, what's the date of the next meeting? Well, you're circulating it, so don't worry. Actually, well, I think we can close the meeting, thank you very much for the good attendance.
Very much, well done, Mr. Chairman.
Well, yes, finish me this hour.